Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call the regular city commission meeting for Tuesday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Please have your call.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Hurdak.
Here.
Commissioner Harretts.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Danz.
Here. Would you have everyone please stand for the moment of silence or pledge allegiance? I ask all of you, please keep in mind, yesterday marked the anniversary of the Harwood incident at Parkland. If we could review all of those people.
Let's do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can have approval of the city commission meeting minutes for the regular city commission commission meeting of February first, twenty twenty-two.
So move.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We'd have acknowledgement of our city board meeting minutes from Hillsborough Inlet District three minutes, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Parnas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. Move over agenda for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Parnas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that was very. Thank you. I would like to add, I know we have a public, we have two public hearings. One is the second reading, then we have a public comment. After that, if it's possible, Commissioner, if there's no polls for consent items, I would like to go ahead and move up the last item that we have, because I know we have a lot of people here for that. Item number fourteen, do you have an issue with that? If there are no polls for our consent items? You have a poll? If you have a poll, that's okay. So we'll go through it as we have. All right.
Thank you. Good evening. Anthony Soroka, City Attorney. Item number one on tonight's agenda is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, supporting the expansion of both Deerfield Beach Express One and two community shuttles for Saturday services, approving the First Amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County for community shuttle services to reflect the funding decrease, reflect an increase in service hours and days, and amend the vehicle list, authorizing execution of the First Amendment, providing for implementation in effective date. This is public hearing.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is required to be a public hearing for Broward County. This was before you previously, but they informed us that they needed this to be done via public hearing, so it's back before you. The essence of the item and the subject of it really is to, what, as, as the City Attorney said, decrease the funding. However, realize that in previous years, up before the surtax, the funding level for this was, was much less, was around twenty dollars per hour. When the surtax kicked in, they bumped that up to fifty-eight dollars an hour, and then Broward County came back and did an audit of the entire community bus shuttle system, not only for Deerfield Beach, but for all, I believe it's sixteen in total, community bus shuttle services that are done throughout the county by various municipalities, and they looked at what the true cost is for, for operating that commuter bus shuttle service. So the amount now is at forty-eight dollars an hour. So that's what the funding decrease references there. The reference to reflecting increase in the service hours and days is those Saturday bus shuttle services that we now provide, and the amended vehicle list is just a reflection of the updated list of vehicles that we currently have in our fleet that service the community bus service.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have any comments before I open to the public? Not seeing any, anyone from the public here to comment on the side? That's where it's even written in? See anyone online or here in the audience who may close it to the public then? Commission? Commissioner Parnas?
I am old for public transportation and takes cars off our roads, and this service means there will be less cars on the road, so I am supporting it and urging the Commission to support.
Thanks. The Saturday service is based on the needs that we have our community, based on residents of places like Paul's, which is the vital service for them, so I also encourage approval of the side. Can you take that as a motion from Commissioner Parnas?
Absolutely. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion from Commissioner Parnas, second by Vice Mayor Preston. We have full call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hurdak.
Yes.
Commissioner Harretts.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Danz.
Yes.
Item number two is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, adopting an amendment to the city budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, approving supplemental appropriations and budget transfers to various funds, and reducing appropriations to the Disaster Recovery Initiative Grant Fund by one hundred and eight thousand dollars and the two thousand bond fund by ninety-one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, set forth in the attached Exhibit A, providing for conflict severability and effective date. This is second reading.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading of the mid-year budget amendment. The city staff did conduct a, a public workshop as well as individual meetings with the Commissioner. We provided a presentation during the first reading, and I'm happy to address any questions that the Commission or the public may have at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner, you have any questions before you open to the public? Okay, now, see if you need, if anyone's written in? Let's see what online, is there anyone from the public who care to, just decide? Okay, and then close it to the public then?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Parnas, second by Commissioner Hurdak. We have full call, please. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, this needs to be, yes, full call, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
We are now at the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Person's addressing the Commission, so I'll state his or her name and address, and they speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the Mayor. This is the time of the agenda for public comment on items that are not currently on the agenda. If you have public comment on an item that's on the agenda, the time to do that is after the agenda item is called, and the public comment period is open for that item. And as a reminder, no comments that are made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, no language which should offend person's ordinary sensibility shall be permitted.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who care to comment tonight? Perfect timing, come on up. Granted, we won't start the timer until you're at the mic. Just your name and address for the record.
This wouldn't be a meeting without you here. Yes, you can take it up, speak.
That's right.
Thank you for waiting for me. I would like to say, so Amy K. Tanner, one eleven Southeast Avenue, Otis Tanner Way, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I would like really first to convey a message from, who is not here, constituency and all of you, how much people enjoy the Zoom meetings. People that might not be able to come can come to their computer. Me, not so much. I've tried, but I'm not really good at that, but I like to be here where I can watch and see her, let you know I care, and that was something I've really tried for several weeks to remember to tell you. Another, I'm so glad that we're able to have our annual celebration Pioneer Days or Founder's Day or whatever we call it, to celebrate our city. So I can see, actually, that, that holiday or that celebration has been here in Deerfield as long as I have, exactly. So I'm really glad to see us doing it this time. It was created to do it with the art show, because I know people count on seeing the art show too. So whoever thought of, all of you that thought of that, what a good idea. And I, I hope to continue our beautiful weather that we've had, because then more people will come, but unfortunately, it's a mixed thing. The winds are a little much, you could turn that down, and I'm learning to see if my friend is on, but anyway, that's all I'm going to talk about, other than to say once again, I'm really proud to live in here.
Thank you very much, Amy K. I won't look for a motion to include the weather for this meeting. Take that as being considered. Yes, would you like to come on up?
Have you lost one oh three, one of these nineteenth Avenue? I'm concerned, condominium on nineteenth, one of these nineteenth Avenue, Riverfront South, is apparently being sold to become an Airbnb. It's twelve units, and I believe it might be pretty far along, because I think some of the people have ordered the NASTA, but my concern is twelve units becoming, it's one bedroom, one bed, it's a motel to me, but it's not an Airbnb, so I don't know exactly how to perceive what to do, so I guess this is the first step of your protocol, if there's anything.
We'll find out if that rumor is true.
What?
We'll find out if that rumor is true.
I'm pretty sure it is, but yes, I still love Deerfield.
Thank you, it's Ross. Anyone else from the public here to comment? Yes, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. You can take down your mask if you like. Yes, I think I hear you, there you go.
Thank you.
Just your name and address for the record.
Mary Dawson, Emma Systeming and House, fourteen hundred South Avenue, Gavin Quay, temporary address right now, stay in the hotel. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak to you all, and to represent concerning housing prices of the street too high, sending in folks that own a fixed income, and we've been looking to, similar, and we not, what's enough to help, to, that it's been a benefit. We've come at the mercy of, you want to see if there's a program or anything that will be able to assist to decrease the prices, find the right, get to the right path, we can use ourselves, hotel.
We can make sure staff gets you and see if we provide assistance for you. Thank you. It's your City Manager, can we have staff? Is there anyone else from the public who care to comment on this item? Or not this item, just public comments? I don't see anyone online, perhaps anyone written in? Let's see if anyone else closes publicly.
We are now on consent board appointment, there's one on there. It's okay with you, Mayor, I'm going to read it into the record.
Yes.
Item number three, resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, appointing a Matt Mitchell as a regular commissioner of the Deerfield Beach Housing Authority to fill an expired term and providing an effective date.
Commissioner, is there any comments on this? This is my appointment, I asked for your support to reappoint Ms. Mitchell. Or actually, move her to this, this particular position, which is the same position she's had here, because her residency has changed. She was a member based on the fact that she was living in one of the housing facilities. That has changed, but I would still like her to remain on the board, and she's allowed to be in this position. Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion of seconds, or anyone from the public who care to comment on the side? Let's see if we can hear, let's see if online. Okay. Close it to the public. We have a motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, we are now at consent agreements and expenditure requests. Items, item numbers four through thirteen are on consent.
Vice Mayor, I know you had a poll, you didn't want to shut anybody off, okay? Did it poll? Commissioner Drosky, Commissioner Hurdak, do you need polls?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Parnas? Okay. I think we can do, is there anyone from the public who here, like to comment on items four through fourteen? Let's move five analysis, that's going to be all.
Thirteen, Mayor.
Excuse me, thirteen.
Fourteen, thirteen.
Four through thirteen. Not seeing, was there anyone online or anyone to present? Okay. If it's the Commission's will, we can do all of those items except for five. As a single presentation, so all right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a motion? No, no, say it. Excellent. We have a motion approved from Commissioner Parnas.
Second.
The second from Vice Mayor Preston. We have full call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Item number five.
Item number five. Item number five is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the settlement agreement and release with Endo Health Solutions, Inc. and Endo Pharmaceuticals, Inc., related to the opioid litigation, authorizing execution of the settlement agreement, providing for implementation and effective date. If it's okay with you, I can give a brief description of this if you'd like. Okay. So you may recall that, you know, a number of cities and governments throughout the country have filed a multi-district class action lawsuit against opioid pharmaceuticals and distributors. This city is one of those litigating participants, and you had approved previously execution of a memorandum of understanding to join Florida and the Florida Plan, so that when the state of Florida enters into settlements, you can go ahead and proceed and enter into those settlements and receive for money from the city. We, you have seen a few of these previously, like Jensen, this is another now pharmaceutical company that Florida has entered into a tentative settlement on, and this is your authorization to approve the agreement, and I believe the estimate provided by the Florida Attorney General, it's in the face sheet, I want to say it was around approximately seventeen thousand to Deerfield Beach. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any question?
No, I don't have any questions, Mayor. As I was going through the backup, I think that we all are kind of aware of the opioid problems that play a neighborhood, actually play a nation. And we were supposed to get specifically, actually, according to backup, sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars, rather than that, just sold into the general fund of, as the Commission, if they would take the sixteen thousand dollars, which is not a lot of money, and let's create a, a intervention program from the city that deals with signs of symptoms of opioid overdose, prevention, treatment, even dealing with suicide. It's not a lot of money, and if we were to take that money and put it back into the community to help people suffering. My son is a paramedic for Broward Chair, and there are constant, constant calls related to opioid overdose, where people are dying, and so if the Mission was available, I would like to see that money set up to, to an intervention program.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the most, Mayor. I know part of the impact that we kind of city as far as the dollar amount has cost us, I know we put together, we put forward a lot of money to make sure we get our cap in a lot of places, and the, the cost of that, just to deal with some of the issues in that, with the epidemic. I, I don't have a problem doing that. I have a problem doing it on the fly, here's from this specifically where it is, but I'd love the idea of your marketing net specifically, to respond, that will address these issues. I don't know, I'm probably going to look for some direction from the City Attorney and the City Manager on that. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out too, that to, to Vice Mayor Preston's point, that the Florida Plan, when you requires that you use this money for certain approved uses along the lines of what you're stating, for opioid treatment, training, prevention, so you'll be required to use that money for that, and you do have multiple settlements with, with additional monies coming in, and I think this is, this may potentially be the quickest one where you get a check, it's supposed to fund within ninety days, so you have some time to ultimately decide what you want to do. Point that out.
One thing, Mayor, that I would like to say, that in that intervention, that the city would go into each district, District One, District Two, Three, and Four, and give a positive presentation on how people may be able to receive help, because there's, again, extraordinarily high number of people that have lost loved ones, and still, when we talk to them, they just still have issues about where to go, how to deal with this. So I'd like to see something in each district.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, certainly, anyone from the public who care to comment on the side? Let's see, anyone in the audience, let's see, and even the online. No one's written in? I'm going to close it to the public. With the limitations that we have on this, on this money and where it can be allocated towards, can we give staff maybe some direction to come back with, let's know how it's, is that all right?
Yes, Mayor, and, and knowing what the limited uses of, of the funding is, and at this point, not knowing what the total amount will be, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, just along the same lines, that's Commissioner Preston, and I, and I know that we have many community partners out there who have existing programs that I, I would like to also explore, so we can do the exact intent that Commissioner Preston is, is talking about, but with resources that already exist.
Excellent, thank you, is that all? All right, we're looking for a motion in this.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead, Dan.
You have a motion from the Vice Mayor, and it's a second from Commissioner Parnas, motion is second. We have, we'll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Item number fourteen is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the Eighth Amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Deerfield Beach and the Florida Atlantic Research and Development Authority, authorizing extension of time for the development of four acres of the Florida Atlantic Research and Development Authority project in the City of Deerfield Beach, providing for execution, severability, conflicts, and an effective date. This is first reading, and I believe we have representatives here, on behalf of the applicant, that are prepared to provide your presentation.
Good evening. Dennis Mealy, two hundred and eighty sprawler, Bodart for Motown, on behalf of People's Trust. We've, we're already up there, we have some slides, and you can sit and look at those up there. So, on the first slide, you see the location of the site, right at the corner of Tenth Street and I ninety-five, and then the rest of the area outlined in red is the balance of the FAU research park at the beach. Go to the next slide, please. So just zeroing in on the site, the four acre site right there at the corner, you see the red. Go to the next slide, please. And this shows the actual fee symbol property that was owned by the City of Deerfield Beach within that red line. Outside of the red line is right of way, either for I ninety-five, Tenth Street, or Eleventh Lane. So just wanted to zero in and show you the exact property. Before we go further, you will recall, I'm sure, that we were here in May last year, when the Seventh Amendment to the lease was approved, and we had hoped that would be the last amendment to the lease. Unfortunately, we are back here today because realized, looking at what was previously approved, that we needed to make adjustments to the building. And a lot of the presentation I'm going to show you in a few minutes is addressing how that building has changed, and how it compares to other similarly situated office properties in Deerfield Beach. And go to the next slide, please. So this is a site plan for the property, showing the building in white, the parking in gray, and then all the green areas, of course, as well. The light green is the water retention or dry retention or drainage areas for the property. So the building is slightly over forty-one thousand square feet. It is the largest building we can build without owning a structured parking garage, and the importance of this issue about surface parking versus structured parking, I'll come back to in a moment. If we can go to the next slide, please. So these are just some renderings of the building. This is looking at, from the corner roughly of Tenth Street and the I ninety-five ramp, and you see the elevated portion of the building, the two-story portion, and the same story. Go to the next slide, please. So this is a breakdown of the building itself, as I mentioned, forty-one thousand square feet and change, about forty-two percent of the building would be occupied by RRT, a Rapid Response Team, which is part of People's Trust umbrella organization. The other fifty-eight percent of the building is for other tenants, for people other than RRT. In the first version of this building we had, we had more space for other tenants, but again, it would have required us to build a parking garage, we estimated the cost of that was somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve, fifteen million dollars. And that's really where the difficulty came, and why we needed to come back to you again this evening. So if you're looking at this portion of the site plan and the upper right-hand portion, that is a two-story segment, and the upper left-hand portion, right at the corner of the L, so to speak, is another two-story section, and then the balance in between are one-story sections. The property right at the upper left-hand portion, that two-story portion, that would be where RRT could go, all the way at the other end, at the east end of the building, that other two-story portion, you can envision more likely a lot of medical use, and then all of the other bays in the building would be for these innovation or new companies starting out, and need space, as we talked about last time. So we tried to keep that non-RRT space as big as we could, and made sure that we made it available. All of the other commitments we've made at the time of the Seventh Amendment still hold true in terms of the internships and other funded programs that People's Trust and RRT have been engaged in, and just spoke to you about when we were here last year. The one thing that really has changed, in addition to the size of the building, is the financial package. We were here in May of last year, our total compensation to the city would be two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars paid a certain number of days after the Seventh Amendment was signed, and then the second hundred thousand dollars from that agreement would be paid at the time of building. We've totally redone that now. Hundred thousand we already paid, of course, it's already paid, and the city has it, and you keep it. The way we've structured the balance of the payments, if this is approved on second briefing, then I think it's five business days or some amount like that, we would pay one point one million dollars. And then at the time of building permit, we pay another million dollars, and at the time of CO, we pay another million dollars, so the total compensation would be three point two billion dollars. Now, we didn't just come up with these numbers out of the air, we had an appraisal done, if I can, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of other people that will speak, and it's the appropriate time I like to introduce them, but, so, in coming back to you from last year to this, what has changed? Building got smaller, but the compensation package got up there. Of course, I know you all know the FAU research park lease that's been in effect for a number of years, generally, there is not money coming to the city from these other leaseholds that will come in. In this case, there is, and it's a significant number. Go to the next slide, please. Um, go to the next slide, please. So this is just showing you another vignette of the building, so you can see what it looks like. And I'll promise I'm almost done with slides. You can go to the next one, please. So this is our schedule, and what you will notice, if you look at the schedule that we had last year when we were here, this is the same number of months from the time the Eighth Amendment of the lease extensions approved. Then that starts day one uh in our process, and then um everything follows from there. Same amount of time that we had before to achieve a building permit, same amount of time that we had before to finish the building CO. Obviously, the start time is different because we were approved in May of twenty-one, and here we are now in February, March twenty-two. So that amount of time has been pushed back, but once we start, it'll be the exact same amount of time to get the building permit and to get the CO. Um, we go to the next slide, please. So before I I introduce the appraiser who we work with, Walter Duke, I want to just go over a couple of uh factors here. So when we first started this discussion, uh, we had done an appraisal to try to determine the value of the property uh if the FAU research park lease remains in effect, or the value of the property if the lease goes away. Now, the FAU research park lease will expire on March fifteenth of twenty-twenty-two unless it's extended. And we know that if the lease is not extended, then the property, the city is the fee simple owner. If it would be no longer a lease encumbering property, then the city could do what you want to do with it. If you want it to go to municipal use, of course, the county would like to do that. If you wanted to sell the property for development, of course, according to your charter, you would need a referendum. And I believe according to your uh property disposition ordinance, I'm not sure if I'm using the right name, but I know that that's a vulnerability of government ordinance to set a procedure if you're going to sell a property involving RFPs and competition and that sort of thing. So um what we're measuring here is what would this property be worth if there is no more, no longer an FAU research park lease, and you could build or sell or do what you want to do with it? Our appraiser came up with a number of two point nine million. That is based on building, a building of about forty thousand square feet. City's appraiser came up with a different number, I believe it was about six point five million. And the real difference was only one thing. Both appraisers appraised the property as if it would be worth sixty-five dollars per square foot of building area. So you look at how much of a building could you build, you've got the number of square feet, multiply it by sixty-five dollars, that gives you a number. Our appraiser was looking at an overall about forty thousand square feet, and so it came up with two point nine million. City's appraiser was looking at a building of about a hundred thousand square feet, and then so he came up with six point five million. Now, the hundred thousand square foot number comes from the plat note. That's what the plat note says today. You've got the one hundred thousand square feet of a research and development building. And so you really think about that more like an office building, I guess, because research and development building is a general category. And what we found is we just don't see that level of development for a property of this size being likely on this property. So before um I introduced Walter, we had the CBRE real estate uh company do an analysis for us of all the office building complexes in Deerfield Beach. And the folks at CBRE did this, specialize in brokerage for office buildings. So if we could go up, so this map shows the twenty-six office complexes in Deerfield Beach. Now, you'll notice one that is not included. It doesn't include the JM family campus, because JM occupies their own buildings. They don't lease space to other people. Whereas these other office buildings that are out here are buildings where an owner might be there for part of the building, but otherwise it's leased for the REs, or it may just be owned by a real estate company, and it's always to different people. So if we can go to the next slide, I'll show you the chart that goes with the map. So these are the twenty-six complexes. Uh, you'll see the name of the complex, you'll see the address. Um, you're probably familiar with a lot of them just from looking at the names and addresses. So you'll notice of these twenty-six buildings, there's five that are highlighted with yellow because those five have some structured parking. They have, suddenly they have some surface and structure, but they have some structure. So if you look at them, the first one is the Connell Building, which is on the north end of Fairway Drive. And you notice that they have a healthy amount of garage spaces. They have a hundred and fourteen total spaces, sixty-six are surface, and the balance of almost sixty are in a garage. Uh, eight hundred Fairway Drive, also a north end of Fairway Drive near the Connell Building. And you see that they have a pretty substantial amount of garage space. Uh, the next one you see is Hillsborough Commons, which is a project I've actually been working on for quite some time now. And you see they have some structured parking. And then Hillsborough Center Five, they have some. When the last one is the Atlantic Pavilion, and you notice that they only have eighteen spaces in the garage, that's tuck under under a building. Our point is that the overwhelming predominance of office buildings in the City of Deerfield Beach are surface park. And why is that important difference between structured park and surface park? Because structured parking costs so much more to build, you have to be sure that you can get the rent to be able to afford to pay for that structured park. It's the same thing you see on on multifamily developments too, where you'll see five-story apartment buildings with all surface parking. Because if you put it in structured parking, you have to charge a lot more rent. Why are we concerned about this? Because this is our competition for the space that RRT will might use themselves, for the fifty-eight percent of the building that would be leased to other parties. We're going to be competing with the other office buildings on the sheet. And if we had a fifteen million dollar, twelve million dollar parking garage, we wouldn't be able to compete on equal footing and charge the kind of rent that we think we would have to charge in order to attract tenants. Uh, if I could, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Walter Duke, who is an appraiser, uh, longstanding in the community. Uh, and I'd like him to talk about the appraisal he did and the comparison for the appraisal that was done by the city. And Walter, if you could, let me introduce yourself and tell the commission a little bit about your background.
Sure, my pleasure. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Clerk, and City Manager. It's indeed my pleasure to be here tonight to hear and argue on. I have the pleasure of doing uh before this board, uh, before, I believe, the last time I was serving CO. Which turned out fantastic. As Dennis mentioned, I am a commercial appraiser, and uh People's Trust folks did engage our firm to conduct an appraisal on the four acre property that Dennis was pointing out on the screen. As he pointed out too, we did two scenarios, one as under the lease that it currently exists, uh, which would be pick me in an office or research type of use. And then the other would be sort of a hypothetical use, is if you run while on the lease, then you're away with that. Took it through the public process. Sold it to a non-commercial use, because there's no way of knowing that at this time, and so there's improvement, and you do, of course, improve it as well. Um, just quickly on my background, I I've been uh appraising properties in Broward County since nineteen eighty-five. Our firm has been here since nineteen seventy-five. During that time, we probably appraised over a thousand commercial properties in Deerfield Beach. And it's been amazing to watch Deerfield, Deerfield Beach grow since the eighties to where it is now. It's just absolutely unbelievable. I should also mention to you as well that I also served uh term as Mayor of Daniel Beach and also Commissioner of Daniel Beach. So I've certainly great appreciation of your service, decisions that you make on a daily basis here in the city. Um, so if I may, I would just sort of like the layout, just quickly, uh, not in a long way at all, just the the how I approach the appraisal, the difference between the two appraisals. Just to give you the information that I think I would want if I were in your shoes to make an informed decision. And as Dennis mentioned, um, the 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 city had an appraisal done by Jonathan. And I will tell you, Jonathan Whitney is a fantastic appraiser. He's a good guy, and his dad, I can guarantee he does a great job. Do business together, and improve business for Jonathan. He's a good appraiser. So certainly no quarrel with that. Um, and what he was asked to do was appraise the property as he sees it. And what he saw was that he would appraise it based on the maximum development on the four acres, which is one hundred thousand square feet of office. And as Dennis mentioned, a hundred thousand square feet of office, of course, would require structured park. And so if you look at a parking ratio of four foot thousand, that's a four hundred space parking garage and a thirty thousand dollars of space. That's about a twelve million dollar proposition to build a parking garage, and I'll get back to that in a bit. Taking into consideration the the recent tribulations that the applicant has made to 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 try to feasibly design an eighty thousand square foot structure on the site with structured parking. Looking at the market, much like Dennis did in CBRE, in terms of what does this one generally insist on, what does it generally uh attract and 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 has developed here. And, you know, I came to the conclusion that given all of those factors, that about a forty thousand square foot building, or roughly about what the what the applicant has proposed, seems like a reasonable four acre ratio on this property, that's about forty percent. And uh it it seemed to be reasonable to me. Uh, it is consistent with what I'm seeing out there with regard to the costs associated with structured parking and the pause in the office market and post pandemic economy. So you've got two appraisals, you've got a city appraisal of a hundred, let's just call it the hundred thousand square foot appraisal, that's six point five, that's sixty-five dollars a square foot times a hundred thousand. And then you've got my appraisal, which is the same sixty-five dollars a square foot, but at forty thousand square feet. So it's just a smaller building footprint, but it's the same indicator. And I didn't review the city's appraisal, and again, like I mentioned, I bear respect for Jonathan, he's a fantastic appraiser. But one thing that sort of jumped out at me in that appraisal that really wasn't addressed or covered was that there was really no mention at all um about the impact of a twelve million dollar parking garage that would be required to build a hundred thousand square foot building. So, you know, I'll leave that to you, but to me, if you have two identical sites and one requires a twelve million dollar parking garage and one doesn't, you know, there's got to be some sort of impact to the underlying entity as well. So i- i- at the end of the day, you know, I really felt that the likelihood of a hundred thousand square foot facility on this property in this market at this location just seems very unlikely. There's really three reasons why I came to that conclusion. Number one, the development of this size just isn't feasible uh due to the cost of the parking garage. As I mentioned, the applicant's architecture and construction professionals went through a number of gyrations, and certainly they wanted to max that site out, much like developers seem like they normally do. But not always, not always. Usually sometimes it's market driven as well. So even though you could build a thousand units on a property in a multifamily, let's just say maybe the market density and the and then setbacks and zoning, you only end up at five hundred. So it isn't always that you max out the density at every property. Um, so when you talk about these guys trying to build an eighty thousand square foot vertical office building and parking garage, it just was too expensive for them. It just didn't work out. It didn't pencil out. And I would also point your attention to, and I don't know if the city's appraisal was in the backup, but on one of the comments of one of the land sales, a hundred thousand square foot appraisal, land sale four, and I quote, "In the comments of the sale write-up, we, when we do appraisals, we we have a table of sales, and then we have like write-ups of those sales." Sort of describing in more detail the the details surrounding the transaction. And sale number four, and I quote, it says, "Site plan approved for eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two square feet of office, but this was not economically feasible." After interviews with a representative of the buyer, the office project only appears feasible when developed without a costly parking structure and reduced office size to around sixty thousand square feet to allow for more surface parking. Again, very standard in today's market, particularly with the rise of cost and inflation hasn't used these days. So in that same write-up, the the appraiser, city's appraiser noted that for a surface parking lot, the land price was sixty-two fifty per building area square foot. But if there was going to be a structured parking requirement on the site, it dropped all the way down to forty-five eighty square foot. So that sort of takes into account the extra costs associated with building the building and the parking garage. You can only pay so much for the land, so the land price drops. So I I think that would sort of be my number one point as to why I didn't look at it as a hundred thousand square foot building, because it just wasn't feasible. Number two, Dennis touched on this a little bit, but the site really doesn't, when you look at the four hundred figure set, it really doesn't meet the basic criteria of a hundred thousand square foot corporate headquarters facility. Uh, when I look at the comparables and the hundred thousand square foot report done by the city, I see comparable sales that are located next to major demand generators. For example, Holy Cross Hospital was one sale, Boca Town Center was another sale, Daniel Point Mega Mixtue Facility where Spirit Airlines put their headquarters. Fort Lauderdale National Airport, which is nearest where Spirit put their headquarters as well, and then, of course, the Garden Super regional mall where I feel about the headquarters. So, you know, you see a pattern develop of corporate headquarters that develop near major demand generators, for things like airports or malls or hospitals. So I don't really see that on this site. So as I analyze the property and I try to determine what is the reason why it's the best use of this property, you know, that to me told me that it's probably not a hundred thousand square foot corporate headquarters. It doesn't fit the site criteria. And then third and finally, and and again, Dennis touched a little bit on this with the CBRA presentation, a hundred thousand corporate head, square foot corporate headquarters is a unicorn in the Deerfield Office Beach, uh, Office Park, Deerfield Beach Office Park, excuse me. Um, and as such, the hundred thousand square foot appraisal presents only one corporate headquarters land sale in Broward County since two thousand sixteen. So it it just sort of highlights the fact that a hundred thousand square foot building sale don't occur very often, are sites to develop a hundred thousand square foot. They're just, they're just kind of rare by their nature. So when you look at the fact, I called Martin Care's office, I said, "How many qualified commercial transactions have there been in Broward since two thousand sixteen?" They told me about three thousand. So it just sort of underscores the rarity of a hundred thousand square foot corporate headquarters. And uh as Dennis mentioned, outside of JM Family, there are no hundred thousand square foot headquarters in the market. In fact, there's not a lot of hundred thousand square foot headquarters in Broward County in general in most cities, so it's not just Deerfield Beach. Another thing that I noticed as I came to my decision in terms of the size I used for my valuation, I I looked at the fact that the average Deerfield Beach office building size is about forty-five thousand square feet. So this fits. It it's consistent with this market. It's consistent with what others have built in this market, and it's consistent, it's consistent with what is feasible. Um, and I think another point that that I considered, and and very possibly the city's appraiser may not even have this information, and that happens sometimes. When you work for the applicant, you sometimes have available information to you than the city's appraisal. And I've been, I work with a lot of cities, and I've been on both sides. But one thing that struck out to me was that for almost two or three years, the applicant has tried to put a corporate headquarters on a beautiful site right on I-95, in between their headquarters building and their structured parking garage, which, by the way, is phenomenal. It's probably one of the best parking garages I've ever seen. So you have a situation with a beautiful I-95 fronted site that's ready to go with the parking area in place, and they still can't land a corporate headquarters tenant. So I just think it sort of lends to me the unlikelihood that that's going to occur, when it hasn't occurred already on a better site, along I-95. The other thing I would point out in closing is that generally speaking, in this post pandemic economy, Florida has been a huge winner. Real estate is on fire. Residential real estate is on fire. Commercial real estate is on fire. There's no doubt about that. We see that on the day to day. Restaurants are busy. Hotels are getting busy, and that's fantastic. Uh, and that's fantastic. We all live here, work here, and we want the best for Broward County. But I think what we're seeing is a real slowdown in the office market. For three years in Broward County, we've had negative absorption, and what we're seeing is corporate headquarters relocations really occurring in Miami and Palm Beach. And I think one of the main reasons that you're seeing that is because in Miami and Palm Beach, you have fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, a hundred million dollar homes where the CEO is going to relocate. And we don't have that here in Broward. In Broward, we're more of a, a, an affordable county to build from that standpoint. We don't have residents that are fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, a hundred million dollars necessarily. There's some beautiful ones on the ocean up here. But that's, that's really a small amount of the inventory in Broward County. So as a result, we're seeing most of the corporate relocations going to Palm Beach and going to Miami Dade. And most of them are in smaller boutique buildings. So I think when you add all of those things up, you have a valuation that the city has performed for a hundred thousand square feet or five million six, or excuse me, six million five, which really doesn't bake into the consideration that you've got a little tall million dollar garage. How the appraiser would do that, or how they would handle that, had they handled that, it's tough to say. But you can't help but think that would have some negative impact on the land, much like the comparable land sale four that I referenced in the city's appraisal, which was about a fifteen dollar point difference. So I think at the end of the day, I just think the probability of a hundred thousand square foot building is very low. And the probability of a forty to forty-five to fifty thousand square foot is very, very high. So from that standpoint, I think, you know, as I view the property, that is the most likely highest end issues in this property under reasonable near term economic conditions for a surface park of forty to fifty thousand square foot office building. With that, I'll close on available questions. I appreciate your time and consideration and your service to the city.
Big question.
Dennis Mealy, again, on behalf of People's Trust. So just a couple of quick things. I know we threw a lot of numbers out tonight, but I guess this is a numbers-driven type of thing. Let's set, uh, separate from the numbers for just a minute. So People's Trust has been in the city now, I believe, for seven years. Um, they're the only private use that has come into the FAU research park in Deerfield Beach, and we'd like to do more. Um, you heard Walter's description about the various values of property. And one thing also that I can get to take into account is if we do that.
You heard Walter's description about the various values of property. And one thing also that I can get to take into account is if we do this. Then you are certain the money you will be, you'll be receiving, three point two million. This will happen quickly. Our schedule requires us, this is approved tonight. And that's your next meeting to immediately start our site plan process and go as fast as we can toward building permit and construction. If you let the lease expire, then of course the property is, the city's in B simple. If you want to build a municipal building, there's no restriction on that. If you want to sell it, of course you have, you have to see if you're going to have interest from the types of uses you want. City's appraiser mentioned that B three zoning would be the best way to go, but then he said, but let's zero in on a corporate office. Because B three could also include all kinds of other stuff to detail or anything else. So will you get? Offers to build what you want to see on this property, thanks to that B in office? And will they want to build a big enough office that they would pay you a lot more money than we're paying? So, you know, you've got to look at, will you get those offers? Will they be as big as you think they will be? Will the voters approve it through a referendum? And all of those things are going to take time and there's a lot of contingencies, a lot of what happens if, whereas with what we're proposing tonight. Uh, you know what you're getting, you know when you're getting it, how much it is. So we want to come here, we want to create the jobs, uh, and we want to build there and continue as a corporate citizen of Deerfield Beach. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Burke.
Please, we've been having a bit of a hard time with all of our, I'm sorry for company disclosures. Pursuant to what is two thousand nine, this is our six, we call the company contributions made on the back of the first team order. For permission of one of the plans, five hundred dollars on January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, commissioner of tax loss, two thousand five hundred dollars. Commissioner Michael, that five hundred dollars to the fifth thousand.
Thank you. I'll open it to the public with the happy commission of these comments for asking questions and to have just fairness to the public. So that might change some comments they have to speak in time. Vice Mayor, it's your district. You want to go first. I think it's your handouts, I guess.
Mayor, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. There are obviously all the considerations that are coming back for extension. You know, I'm going to support this and there's a reason why I'm going to support it. And the reason is. Number one, I have to look at what kind of business dealings have already been for the city of Deerfield Beach. I was in the initial conversation with Mr. Gold before you guys played that the company was, they decided to give. Deerfield Beach an opportunity across the business here. And. In my estimation, they've done a very good job. They brought People's Trust here. They got involved immediately in the fifteenth street project. So they're right across the way from Deerfield Beach High School. And that may be, you know, feel really good that they wanted to help in the neighborhood where they have a business. See how they might be internal and helping out kids. They brought jobs. To the city of Deerfield Beach, best employment. And you have to really appreciate that in this climate. They brought jobs and they will bring more. And. The fact that they were willing to make a three point two million dollar commitment, I mean, that's real. We could actually talk and speculate. About, you know, additional money is coming from somewhere else, but it's just that it's not real. It's just proposed. This is real. Um, I think with the relationship they've had with the city that they've earned the right to have this extension. And I'm going to support this. Because I feel this is the right thing to do for our community, for the community. Of Deerfield Beach, our city, and in District Two, I know it has been a positive. And so I would urge my colleagues to support this. You know, I know that there have been, you know, talk about what could be there. Well, we understand in detail. What Potter is looking to do, what People's Trust is looking to do on that property and the commitment they've made. Nobody else has made a three point two million dollar commitment. And there's another consideration that I would ask the commission to look at. If you've got three point two million dollars. How long would it take in property taxes before that money would go into the coffers of our city? We don't know what that timeframe would be unless we were to look at the building, look at what comes in on a annual basis and then determine. But we're talking about something that's more on a immediate basis. And that's right now. And I think it would be the best thing for the city of Deerfield Beach. So I will support this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Houda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I as well am going to support this. That property has been a vacant piece of land for twenty-five years. Uh, the thought that there's going to be the Taj Mahal there, anybody can put anything that they want in paper. Uh, and draw something really, really pretty, but you, you have to be realistic on what is going to go in that spot. Uh, you know, appraisals are great, but basically they're worth whatever somebody is going to pay you for your property. A year and a half ago, my house was worth three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the next day, my next door neighbor sold his house for over five hundred thousand dollars to an Airbnb. So is my house worth three hundred thousand or is it worth five hundred thousand? It's worth what somebody will pay for it. This property, like I said, has been vacant for a long time. And we finally have a, a, a good community. Business who is willing to come in here and help develop a property in the city of Deerfield Beach. Uh, to think that there is going to be an eighty thousand square foot facility on that property is unrealistic. Uh, when Mr. Neely put up his properties, his twenty-six listings, uh, not one of them was built in the last fifteen years. Uh, and everybody knows what's been happening with regards to businesses. Uh, and the employees wanting to work remotely, uh, businesses finding that they have, um, a lot of real estate that, um, they don't need anymore. So the thought that, uh, not only is there going to be an eighty square foot facility in this property with a parking garage. Uh, the next thought is, is that you're going to find tenants for it. Uh, there's a vacant piece of land right on I ninety-five next to People's Trust, uh, with a great parking garage. I've been through it. Uh, and, and still no takers. So, so to think that. Uh, this, there, there, there's going to be somebody riding in on a white horse, uh, to develop this property is, is, you know, he's here. And it's time we see that and take advantage of this opportunity for the city. So I, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. You're proposing to give us a million dollars, a million one, a million one, and a million. What are the penalties if all that big the money isn't here? What happens then?
Yeah, Dennis Mealy on behalf of People's Trust, um, you, you might want to ask the city attorney because he's put together a very good memo that explains that if we don't pay and we default, we're out. Okay. If we pay, if we pay some of the money and we default, you keep the money that we paid.
Okay, fine. That, that answers my question. There is a system set up. To pretty much ensure the money's going to be here online. That's correct. And I will support that.
Commissioner Gross can do it because.
I do, I had to just have the clerk unmute me. Sorry about that. Um, I have a different opinion from my colleagues and not to be condescending. Um, I, I, I think that opinion is myopic. Uh, that it's focusing on the here and now versus what could be in the future. And that's why we're elected is to make these tough decisions. And to look into the future, uh, and to protect the residents of Deerfield Beach. And it's always difficult to look into the, to the future because you're rolling the dice and you're looking at the unknown. Uh, but that's why we're here to make those tough decisions. And what is, what is your vision for the city of Deerfield Beach? Now, I can't speak to my colleagues because they obviously just told me what their vision is. Uh, but I have a very different vision for Deerfield Beach or what this city is. And what it could be. And I've always told the candidate applicants that have come before us, um, to be bold, not Fort Lauderdale bold. But bold in that we can make this a better city and to maximize, uh, the very few inches of land that we have left. And so I've always said that this applicant's best argument has been that they can build this property, uh, and have it on the tax rolls. You know, while the city plods along through the RFP process and the, and the referendum. I, I, I get that. But again, what is the vision that my colleagues have for Deerfield Beach? My vision is, is, is different. I mean, going from an eighty thousand square foot building backwards to a forty thousand square foot building. Uh, is not bold in my, in my, uh, in my opinion. It's going the opposite direction. All of the factors that were presented to us tonight as to why we should go with the forty thousand square foot building were present when we approved the eighty thousand square foot building. Nothing is, nothing has changed. And I don't think the residents of Deerfield Beach should have to pay for that. Um, for that miscalculation. That's not on the residence. I'm looking at this through the lens of what's in the best interest of the residents of the city of Deerfield Beach long-term, not today. Yes, three point two million sounds like a lot of money and it could go to a lot of use. I get it. But three point two million. Um, based upon other projects that we could do in the future will be a drop in the bucket. Um, and this, this commission will be a laughing stock in the future of what could have gone there versus what potentially we are not doing going forward. So let me say, you know, say this is why I think, um, that it's worth the roll of the dice. Going forward and trying to get a different project that we, at least that I envisioned at the beginning of this process. First of all, it doesn't have to be just office space. Um, I understand the market is changing with respect to office space and the COVID pandemic and how people are working. But there's many other uses that that site could be. It could be hotel. Uh, it could be medical. Uh, it could be some residential or a combination of any of those in addition to office space. So just limiting your argument to office space, I think misses what other opportunities could be out there. Um, second, and I already alluded to it before, is that the three point two million could just be a drop in the bucket going forward. That's a one-time payment that the residents of the city of Deerfield are going to, each are going to get. Once we get it and spend it, it's gone. Whereas if we were to prove a different potential project that the tax revenue that the city will receive forever. Will make that three point two million pale in, in comparison. And then three is that you have to look at the surrounding area too. Vice Mayor, this, um, this backs up to Mayo Howard Park. You have been a big advocate for that part in that particular area. You know, if this project is done right, you can make that entire corner tie into Mayo Howard Park. You can have such a great vision. You get a Mayo Howard Park and this site tied together. This could be a real opportunity and a real place in the community where people can come together, where we can have events there. Um, I think we're selling ourselves short of what could be done there, uh, and tying those two elements together is something that we really need to look at going forward. Uh, the fourth thing is, you know, we're talking about the economic conditions today, but I'm betting on the economy getting better over time. I'm betting that this, the market will get better, that there will be other opportunities. Um, a lot of the opportunities that didn't happen is because there's a ground lease with the property. If the ground lease is gone, you may get other players, other developers, other. Opportunities that come forward in the future. I don't think we should say no to those opportunities, um, and look shortsighted with this particular project. Fifth is that you also have to consider looking forward. I know it's very difficult to look into the future, but you have to consider everything that's going around with this particular site. So in addition to Mayo Howard Park, you have the improvements that are being made with Southwest Tenth Street. Um, that street is going to be very different than what it looks like today. You're going to have commuters coming from. Every single direction and that site is going to be, I think, even more important than it is today. So. We need to look at what future conditions are going to be. Southwest Tenth Street, you're going to have people coming all the way from Sunrise up South, Southwest Tenth Street. Um, on the Sawgrass Expressway to this area. This will be a very convenient way for them to come in, to come out, to go north, to go south. This could be a very important, and that, and that site is right at the epicenter of all of this. Um, and so I don't want to sell us short with all the things that are being done with Southwest Tenth Street. So those are the reasons that I think this commission has always been bold until now. Um, I'm a little surprised that my colleagues are getting wet feet going forward, because this is a great opportunity that we really have going forward. I'm, there's, this is nothing against People's Trust. This is nothing against Mr. Mealy or his firm. This is nothing against Mr. Duke. They all made a great presentation. I met with all of them. They made great arguments. I, I get it. I understand it. But what is the vision going forward? Look at the Pennell Marina project that we have right across the street here from City Hall. We all told that developer, let's be bold. Let's make that a great project that the city of Deerfield Beach can be proud of. And we did that. And we took the citizens' concerns into play as well. Look at the Elder Building just down the road too. We told that developer as well, be bold, you know, and they're, and what they're doing at the project. Underground the utility lines there. Think outside the box. And there's other opportunities that have not come before us yet that will, that we've told those developers, be bold. Have a good vision for the city of Deerfield Beach going forward. And I want to stay consistent to that message going forward. And I think we should, and we're missing an opportunity. It's hard. To look into the future and to see what's there. I get it. That's why we're here to make those tough decisions. This isn't anything against anyone. This is what could be going forward. And I'd rather take that risk for the reasons that I said, and get something that the city and the residents of Deerfield Beach are going to be proud of in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Grossky. I haven't had a chance to speak and I'll open it up to the public.
I'd like to comment real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Well, if that's the case, we'll let Commissioner Parnas, because he asked first and what have you go next. That's good. Commissioner Parnas?
Yes, my fellow colleague. As the keeper of finance of the city, Commissioner Grossky. I can't vote to turn three point two million down on the hope. That the referendum will get passed by the voters on your vision. Vulcan did that. They turned down a project. So now we're going to go to referendum. Guess what? The voters said no, and they're stuck with the project. I don't want to see that happen. Three point million, we're not talking about a buck and a half here. And we set up that if the money isn't paid on time, whatever we receive upfront, we keep and the project is dead. We put in safeguards. This is a time when money counts. This land has been vacant for twenty-five years. We have a chance to make up over three million dollars. And have a new business, corporate headquarters, which is important to the city. We have a few corporate headquarters here. J M Family is one of them. It needs jobs. It means income. It means new development. This is why I support it. Only because I'm thinking of, we know we got hit with the pandemic financially. How long will that go on? I don't have a crystal ball. I'm not about to turn a project down that's going to put money in on coffers and jobs for our people. In a spot that's been vacant for twenty-five years. Off the highway. If I were going to build a new Hilton or Marriott, I certainly wouldn't build one with the back view window is I ninety-five. For a hotel. Maybe a small three-story hotel with good shades on the, the back windows. But I can't see a luxury hotel going up. When we have the beach. When we have other properties other than looking at ninety five. I say we take the money. We have safeguards. And we don't know what the future is going to be. I would love to say. I looked in my crystal ball and it's guaranteed. That the growth of the city and inviting corporate headquarters into the city is going to continue. We might. We hope it will. We're all working for it. But is it guaranteed? No. My grandma used to say a bite in the hand is worth two in the bush. This is a bird in the hand. I think we owe it to the citizens. To take the money. Develop the, let him develop the property according to what we agreed to. And move on to the next project. That's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Drosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, Commissioner Drosky, I I hear your words. And to to say that this commission isn't being bold by looking at this project. And realizing that this is the best use for this property. Um, you know, there's a difference between a dream and a goal. And what you presented was a dream. There's there's no steps towards a specific goal. Oh, it's going to be a hotel. Oh, it could be medical. It could be an eighty thousand square foot. Um, you could have it incorporated with 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 the park that's over there. Those are all realities. Those 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 could happen. But the reality is is those are. Night more than likely not going to happen. First of all, to have events, we're building a thirty thousand square foot facility less than a mile away as uh for events. Uh, a hotel. There's a hotel across the street. You know. We have to be realistic. Nobody is going to build an eighty thousand square foot. Facility there with a parking garage. It just doesn't make financial sense. I've got an invisible hotel over there. That's been there for ten years. It looks beautiful. But it's not doing anything. Southwest tenth street extension is ten years away. Are we going to wait another ten years to see what's going to be there? I I'm sorry, but it I I I understand your argument, but your argument. Is filled with fluff. It's filled with hopes and dreams and that's great, but this is reality. And in reality is is a forty thousand square foot facility is what's going to be there. It's either going to be there. With this builder. Or hopefully sometime in the future, if if we deny this. But the reality is is. You didn't present any vision for it. You just said, well, it's open for vision. It's all pie in the sky. It's it's wah wah wah. I, you know. I I appreciate your passion. But the reality is. Is is that you 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 haven't provided any solid facts or any solid vision either. You you're just throwing everything against the wall to see what's going to fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drosky. I'm going to open it up to the public at this point. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? I imagine we're all out here just to listen. Don't be shy. Be shy or be shy. Uh, when Clark read us your hand raised online.
One Clark Reed, fourteen thirty, Southwest Sixth Way. Well, here we are again back with FAU and the research park. Mayor, I I hear what Mr. Mealy is saying about. What he can put there now. And um. I'm just waiting to see. Is it really going to happen? Because we've been at this stage with FAU and this property for so long with so many things coming. And we get to a point and nothing happens. So as far as I'm concerned, if you vote to uh go with this tonight. I'm just going to sit back and wait and see. That's the attitude I'm going to take. And I'm telling you right now that we have been at this juncture with this research park. And uh previously and it failed. So I'm I'm, you know, as a resident, I I'm just going to sit back and wait and see what happens at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Katie Freitag.
Katie Freitag, four eighteen Southeast Second Street. I would like to see something done in this location. It is a spot that. Garner definite resources from our community. We could make it something great. Um, I'm not a super huge fan of being bold sometimes. As Commissioner Drosky mentioned. In certain cases, such as the Eller Building Project, I don't want to see it bold. I don't want to see a six. Story apartment building condo slash whatever you want to call it, built in that spot. The traffic on federal will absolutely.
Miss Freitag, if you can stick to this project, that would be great.
Yes, it that's getting to the the issue with the traffic. Traffic on federal will be bad. Traffic on tenth is already bad. Are we going to compound it by putting? Such a large facility in that spot, compounding traffic. We already have enough traffic in the area that we're trying to divert away from the major roads such as tenth. Hillsborough sample. We want to divert the traffic away, not add additional traffic to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else online? Is anyone online? Uh, Matt Kirk, I think you have one eyed reading the record.
Aris Chaloban, one zero nine Southeast Third Street, Deerfield Beach. The city of Deerfield Beach has previously given refuse. A stay on land to EPD to search. EPD developed their facility in the past. FAU has also had a court in the pot that it leased for years. City of Deerfield Beach received. The development is not free on file, even though it was contract deadlines. FAU has written various petitions. The latest proposed lease agreement given to City of Deerfield Beach presents to the owner. Far more than ever seen in the past. After numerous attempts to engage the city mayor. And commission and discussion over debate regarding a driving subject. I have decided to use the option of submitting questions to the city. For submission to the city mayor, manager and commissioner. In order to get this on the record. Therefore, I am submitting the following question for the city mayor, city manager and city commissioners. I. Need taxpayers and property owners of Deerfield Beach to know how the three point two million dollar levy will fall. Will be allocated on pending lease agreement at the end. Many Deerfield Beach property owners would like to see the money go into the general fund reserves. Would also suggest additional lease terms to ensure that any funds received by City of Deerfield Beach. Prior to G S's failure to meet subsequent timeline milestones. Will not be forfeited by the city. G S has submitted a revised formal building plan to the city. And has requested an additional extension until January eleventh, twenty twenty three. To obtain a building permit for the development of the additional property. And a period of eighteen months for obtaining such building permit. To obtain a shell certificate of occupancy for submitted permits. Subject to any further extension due to forceful or the extension. Florida NTS has requested extension. And G S has requested the city an extension fee. In the amount of three point two hundred dollars. The extension fee in consideration for the extension.
Thank you.
No. And the city has negotiated a letter of agreement for T S. Attached and with the deed, which provides for the expensive payment left in outstanding dollars to the city. As follows, one point one million dollars in five distance safe city execution with a limit. One loyalty to the city's seventeen year subscription. With the issuance of a fresh building permit for the building. And an additional one value.
I'll let you finish up. It's almost done.
With an additional one lane to the city's seventeen year subscription of the city's occupancy for the building. It will prove the extension granting of this building shall terminate beyond void without any further action if any of the collateral occur. G S tells to pay the extension fee to the city as provided in the letter agreement. G S tells to acquire the interest in the additional property. By January eleventh, twenty twenty three. Or if G S tells to obtain a building permit. For development of the additional property consistent with the letter agreement. By January eleven, twenty twenty three. Or tells to obtain a shell certificate of applicant seeking the eighteen months of obtaining the building permit. Subject to the transaction page of.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment for this comment? No. I don't see any other hands raised online. Sure. Okay, anyone here in the public like to comment? Don't be shy.
I can't. Any can can I want eleven Southeast Avenue of Deerfield Beach. Oh. I don't sit where y'all sit because I can't think that fast. And as I sit here and I listen to all this. I was raised in the yard. Twenty years alone, a whole lot. But um, think a couple of questions come to mind. How many, what is our ratio to empty uh office buildings? Uh, in town? And. Because. Driving down the road, I see so many for lease, for lease, for lease. And uh. The price, uh, I know. I know people that have relocated because prices have gotten so high. Uh, second thing I thought of. It's going to be right on a a major thoroughfare, ninety five. Uh, Slumrite Expressway. Do we think that all the people that are going to work there are going to come to Deerfield? Or maybe they can just hop on the thing. Well, Vulcan there at work in a minute. Uh, from sunrise from Weston. Uh. It's rhetorical. I mean, I don't know what the answers are, but they're questions that make me think. When we're going to. Build something that something else can't go there. Uh, how how necessary is? Just a question.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I told myself I was going to come here and not talk.
You not talking is something I've never seen, so.
But I'm not disappointed. Um, Bob Burson, owner of K Generators, we said the Free North River Avenue. Deerfield Beach. I'm talking as a company has been anchored in Deerfield Beach for forty forty years. I sit here and I listen to words like. Roll the dice, risk. That. Might, could. And as stewards of the people's best interest of Deerfield Beach, what happens if it doesn't, can't, won't, or didn't? I don't think we're here. To roll the dice. And make and and say what might happen in the future. I think we're here to make the best decisions we can make. In the best interest of the people, the residents and business of Deerfield Beach. I'll cut it off with that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public care to speak? It's not that hard. Bob did it. I'll just assume everybody's here to watch, so. I'll close it to the public at this point. Um. I've got a few questions to ask Mr. Mealy. You know, a lot of this presentation has been talking about um. Why this is the, you know, what was proposed is the wrong side. My question is, why was that not done originally? You're acting like we should ignore what happened the last time you.
Um, if I gave that impression, I apologize. That wasn't my intent. Uh, what I tried to say at the beginning. Is it did come here in May of last year and we did propose an eighty three thousand square foot. After looking at it. We determined that we didn't think we could make it work based on the need to build a twelve and fifteen million dollar parking garage and. Also our concerns about the ability to. To fill the space that would be at least third parties. So yes. Mayor, there's no question. We came back here with a different proposal than we had last time.
And you want us to believe that. Since we're talking about hopes and dreams and club, as I've heard quite a few colleagues. That we're, this proposal will work out differently than what you proposed before.
Well, I think the one big difference here, you know, there's, everybody's talking about sayings they heard. I remember a saying that I always heard when I was a kid, you put your money where your mouth is. Some shape of sitting in the curb wrong. Five day, five business days after this Eighth Amendment is approved, if it is approved. He writes a check to the city for one point one million dollars. So if he doesn't do that within five days after it's approved. Then he's defaulted and this goes away. Once he pays the one point one million dollars, I can't see him walking.
Okay. What is the current research and development that's being done by People's Trust and was proposed at this location? Since we can't look at other occupants and that. We have to depend on what's going in there that we know is going to go in.
Right. So uh, People's Trust as they are today. Uh, went through the white paper process with the Florida Atlantic Research and Development Authority. And so has RRT for the proposed use on this property. Uh, the standard is collaboration with the university based on the statute. And any other tenant that comes into this, the other fifty eight percent of the building that I mentioned, will have to go through that same FAU. White paper process to make sure that they are a business that will be collaborating with the university. So People's Trust had to do that seven years ago. RRT has gone through that process at the FAU Research Park Development Authority. White paper that's been approved and any other tenants that come here will have to do the same thing.
How much research and development is being done by People's Trust at the current site they're at?
Well, Mayor, I think one of the problems with this is the title is research. Development Authority. The statutory language is collaboration. Hold on, who's in the right terminology? Collaborating. And, you know, I guess someone else will be better able to describe that, uh, what that collaboration is than me.
Yeah, I would love to know.
Okay. Is Andrew Doppel that person answering this? Can I have a little bit of place? And if I'll stand by in case you have additional questions for me.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City Commissioners, Andrew Doppel. Thirty six fifty one FAU Boulevard. Oprah Tone. Um, to, I can perhaps. Talk a little bit about research development first in terms of what it really is. Um, doesn't always involve. White coats and the microscope. Research and development is really anything, any kind of inquiry that expands the bounds of human knowledge. So at FAU itself, there is significant research going on, for example, in the College of Business. And in the College of Engineering, that don't involve white coats or a microscope or rather. Um, inquiry into different ways of doing business, different ways of structuring businesses and what results those have. On results, employee, helper, worker and so on. So when we look at any company. In the research park in FAU, whether it's Oprah Tone or here in Deerfield Beach. We ask the company. To meet with individual faculty members from the university in a college of their choosing, so they're special. There are ten at at FAU. To to figure out which areas they'll work on together and what will that yield. Um, and so in the case of People's Trust, uh, on the southern portion of of this property. There have been significant interactions between the company and the College of Engineering, for example, asking computer engineering and computer science. Building systems, databases, so that the um company can better serve its clients. And have better results. And so students as well as faculty have undergone or have undertaken. Those projects to write that software, write those programs. So they've had experiential learning as well as the ability to apply using that knowledge for further federal grants and and other. So they've had experiential learning as well as the ability to apply using that knowledge for further federal grants and and other funding sources. With both People's Trust and RRT, there have been significant conversations and progress made on looking at climate change and sea level rise and how those things affect the insurance fund and how homes are built, where they're built, how they should be assessed for risk. And there've been uh the Center for Environmental Studies based in Davie. Their faculty have engaged significantly with People's Trust folks in order to understand what the market players are seeing so that they can inform their own research. They look at things about how foundations are built, what materials they use to build those foundations, and so on. And then because this company's in in the insurance business, they work with the College of Business to to look at actuarial risks. So the faculty is very interested in seeing anonymized data from People's Trust and companies like them to understand how they underwrite risks and how those faculty members can inform their students and their research on how uh they should be learning the discipline and applying it in the real world. And um that has or will spill over, we expect, into the RRT proposal. And um in addition, there's the, I lost my train of thought, RRT.
With what the plan is to have come forward to this new property and the percentage square footage that you're gonna use for that currently right now, it's gonna be how much does?
So uh, excuse me.
I'm going back to you.
Uh so the uh the building, about forty-two percent will be occupied by RRT, only about fifty-eight percent that's available for third parties that will have to go through the white.
So I don't have to do math to type everybody's taking their shoes off. What is that square footage right there? For other tenants?
I can give you that in just one second.
Thank you.
So the total building square footage is forty-one thousand and thirty-six square feet. The RRT portion is seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven, and the balance is twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine. So the RRT would be forty-one point eight percent, I rounded it off with forty-two. And the uh other third parties would be fifty-eight point two percent, I probably.
So twenty, approximately just under twenty-four thousand square feet for others.
For the third party, yeah, that's right.
Okay, and I would imagine with the resource, which are the RRT that you're putting in there, there's not a lot of, well, i- if we go with Mr. Duffel's explanation that it's anything that expands human knowledge, I think that pretty much can be applied to almost anything that's that to me. It is a little, and I'll get to my point of why I I think that's an interesting response from you. Um, what was it originally that you proposed last time you were here that was gonna go for others to use?
Um, I I think the.
John, you recall the percentage?
I don't recall the percentage. It makes me feel office like to be, so.
Was RRT about the same part or he was about, okay, so uh Mayor R.
So since we can, we have this project, let's assume it's double, that's what we have.
Right, so I I want to answer your question. I think the RRT space in the larger building is about the same amount of space we're showing here now. What has been reduced is the third party space.
Okay.
John, did I say that right?
That's correct.
Yes, that's what, that's my point. So the the third party space right now is about twenty, just under twenty-four thousand. And before it was, let's say, double that previous.
Right, that's probably.
So that's what we're losing, is the, when we talk about what the future could hold there, what could be there, we are, when this first was presented and, like, it's pretty clear, you guys know, that I was against giving any other expansion, extensions. I've been in office since two thousand nine. This is a boondoggle bad deal for the city of Deerfield Beach. It was a gamble that was done and sold to them back in two thousand. Is that when we first did this, this one referendum? I believe that was done back in two thousand. I'm gonna read you the exact language that was on the ballot. We talk about how we sell things, Mr. Parnas, to our residents, and you're worried about a referendum. This is what the language says. Shall the city of Deerfield be permitted to lease property, twenty-one acres of city property formerly owned by the Florida Department of Transportation on I ninety-five, to the Florida Atlantic University Research and Development Authority for the purposes of building and operating a research and development office slash office park for a lease term of ninety-nine years, rental fee to dollar per year of 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 one dollar per year. So this was sold to the residents back at this time period, back in two thousand. But this is going to be for research and development slash office park. We haven't gotten that all these years later. I've been in office since two thousand nine. We've seen no movement on this property. The only time that suddenly we get any action of it, on it, is when it was coming up. When that lease needed to be extended, suddenly there's a lot of action, a lot of interest. All before that, there was nothing. It was a lot of wasted time. Reluctantly, and I believe the reason it was put in to protect the residents, is to make sure that once we got to this point in time, that we realized if it wasn't developed, which I don't think anybody could imagine it developed in that time period. But if it wasn't gonna be developed, at least it would return back to the residents. That for us to have the ability and not the limitations that we currently have it now, and have had for all these years on that property. This was sold to the residents as something completely different than what they're getting. Quite frankly, for the commissioners that are looking to go along with this, I believe you're selling, and you're selling short the residents on what they originally intended when they first voted for this. And if you want them to have any faith in any referendums we bring forward in the future, we need to hold true to what the original intent was. And we're far away from that. Three point two million dollars, very sexy number, that's great, it's wonderful. But you talk about how long it's gonna take for us to make that back in Congress, look at what we've lost in being tied up. But yet, a city of Deerfield Beach plan that is convoluted and complicated, much like we have with the Co Shopping Center, much like we have with um the other shopping center, there were, we don't own the buildings, but we own parking lot. These are weird boondoggle deer deals that we got into that had not worked for, and this is one similar to that. The last time you came before us, I reluctantly gave permission to move forward, my vote to go with it, even though it was something that I felt was wrong. The presentation and what was being presented gave me the hope that there was still a chance to fulfill the original promise to the residents of a research and development office space based on the percentage percentages that were given at the last time. Yes, it was a small amount of money you were gonna give, and I believe you ended up paying some money that you couldn't get back because you did not build it in the timeframe that extension was originally given, is that correct?
Uh, the two, the uh one hundred, there was two hundred thousand dollars due on the other extension. One hundred thousand was five business days after it was approved, we paid that.
So so you've already thrown away a hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, we hope we didn't throw it away, but we did pay it. And the other hundred thousand would have been due at the time of building permanent position, we hadn't gotten that one back.
Okay, again, Commissioner, I I'm gonna tell you, I think we're very shortsighted on this. The number sounds impressive, but when you look at what we're gonna be tied into for the next eighty years, once this is built, the city of Deerfield Beach is stuck, what yet again, with whatever this is gonna be built in this space for the next eighty plus years. I don't think that's a good deal for the citizens of Deerfield Beach. The size is gonna be remaining for something else to be done to fulfill the original promise of research and development park. It's too small to be anything significant. I'll be honest with you, I'm extremely disappointed to sit here and have an appraiser talk about how bad Broward County is really to have people relocating to, since that goes against everything we've been working for, towards with the with the alliance in Fort Lauderdale, what we've been working for as an Economic Development Council in the city of Deerfield Beach, to basically say, look, this is the best you're gonna have, you're never gonna have in the big headquarters, but in here. We're limited with what we have right now. This is it. Th- this lease is a bad deal. It's been a bad deal for the city for a long time. You wanna talk about having a vision, Commissioner Hudek, and and saying this is fluff and this is a reality? I thought the last extension was a reality, and it didn't happen. And I'm supposed to have faith that this is gonna move forward, and now we've given three extensions since two thousand nineteen. Every year we get promises that have been unfulfilled. They've already walked away from over a hundred thousand dollars, one point one, to me is nothing. I don't have a lot of faith that this will move forward, but if you're gonna believe that it is, three point two million dollars in this economy with a location that what you're about to have, it's not gonna take ten years for ten street by one. It'll happen a lot quicker, and I don't wanna sit here twenty-five years from now. People say, who was in charge to allow for this limited view project to go in that prime location when the last prime location's along I ninety-five? And who made that decision? I don't want it to be me, and I would hope you wouldn't want it to be you, because it's very sh- uh short sighted, in my opinion. Commissioner Parnas, we already have a hotel DoubleTree, has no problem with being up against I ninety-five. I am not in a delusion to think that we're gonna build a Taj Mahal. I don't care what people have great ideas for, it's gonna come in there, it's gonna be massive. Yes, there were gonna be impacts, but anything that goes in there is gonna create jobs. I'm not impressed with the job creating by this limited usage that's coming forward right now. I'm not impressed with the dollar amount, though I think it is significant. But I look back at what we've already been through to get here. I've been here long enough to know that I'm I'm disappointed, disgusted. I am more hopeful that our residents will do the right thing and go through a referendum and approve something. It'll be in their best interest, as opposed to something that we're looking at right now to force through because it's the best deal on the table. It's the best deal on the table because we've had nothing else moving forward. We've had limitations, we've had partners that I don't feel have been doing the best job of selling that site and getting that moving forward. And I'm not talking about necessarily people involved right now. This is not a shot at People's Trust in any way, shape, or form. This is talking about the relationship that we've had with FAU, with Florida, and what has happened with that site. It has been a failure, it was a, it was a great effort, it was a good idea, but it failed. And it needs to stop right now. And I I think if we are so limited in our in our scope on this, with the city and what this could be, I'm disappointed. There's a lot more money that can be made up, a lot more, longer term. You're locking this in for eight years on this parcel. Is this really the best that can be done there? I don't think so. I don't think in the end, the question is, i- is not significant in the earth. Not answered for me to convince me that this is the best possible use for this property. I don't believe that. And I think we need to unshackle ourselves. We need to be true to what the residents originally put in there. They're not gonna get a research and development park based on the language that was in there, that they were probably sold on that, and we can tell the way it was sold to them. They're not gonna get that now with this project. They're not gonna get that at all. The relationship with FAU has been a failure, unfortunately, in this location. We have an opportunity to give them a hope for a better opportunity in the future. Yes, we have something concrete right now? No, we don't. But I had something concrete a year ago that fell apart. I'm not trusting that this is the best deal. I don't think it's the right thing for the city of Deerfield Beach. I think it would be a mistake for us to prove that, to to approve it tonight.
Questions, you've got?
Yes.
What do we do if they turn the referendum, referendum down like they did in Boca? What do we do with it then?
Turn what down? You mean in other words, for us to sell that property to somebody else?
Yeah.
Well, then again, you've given the, you've given the voters a chance to have their say on something. Give the power to the voters to do that, something we fight for, okay?
What do we do with the land if they say no?
How about we ask them what they want us to do, as opposed to just approving a project that happens in front of us?
I mean, for next, the next movie.
Okay. Let's put it in their hands. Let's give them the opportunity to make that decision. Let's give us the opportunity to remove the shackles that we've had on this project, on this property, to make it free and clear, to give us the opportunity to see what's out there, and let the voters tell us what they want to do with that, as opposed to us telling them, this is the best deal that's on the table. I've lost faith after the last extension that I granted, that I've been, the last three extensions that we've granted, that I've been against, with hopes that there was still an opportunity to give them what they originally had voted for, which is the research and development park. The space it's allowed remaining here is not enough. It is a short sighted vision, and it's for a small amount of money when you look at the length of what we're tying ourselves into. It's not the best possible use. And I think the things that were talked about with, you know, Richard Grossman, Barthman, Ohio Park, and all these other things, there's a lot of things to be done. There are a lot of things that can't be done now based on the way that is. Let's not limit ourselves. Let's give us the opportunity. We go out for an R and P, People's Trust may come in with an R and P and present themselves then. I I just don't believe this is in the best interest of the city of Deerfield Beach. Vice President.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and as I've said before, to me, you have to look at the relationship that you've had with Florida, and I understand that there have been some issues. And I remember you did reluctantly vote for it, but I think if you have any business plan, things do change. Um, I feel a commitment from People's Trust. I believe that they wanna make this site work for the city of Deerfield Beach as much as they wanna work, wanna make it work for themselves. And I think that uh in this situation, that they actually deserve this, as hard as it may be. I feel that the commitment that they're willing to make because they are saying, listen, uh, there are some challenges here, and we're willing to push forward uh money. That money represents a commitment. It's a commitment. They're not just asking for us to blindly be able to give this extension. And I think that in this situation, at least for me, that it is the right thing to do, and, you know, uh, listen. In the end, it may have been that we could have done, or we could see that about anything. You can always look back and say, well, you know, if we had did this or we did that, this would have been the situation. But we're talking about what we have right now in front of us. What kind of business uh people have, People's Trust being in the city of Deerfield Beach. And I think that they've been such that they deserve a chance to be able to uh to have this extension. And I just think it's the right thing to do. And, you know, just like it is, uh, Mr. Droski said, that uh, you know, we're here to make the tough situations. But guess what? Sometimes we differ in making those tough situations. So I think it's the right thing to do, and uh the points that have been made, you're right, there's, 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 uh, we have been making those extensions. But I really believe that in the end, they're gonna make it work.
Thank you, Vice President. Any other commission comments? I will, I will, I I will say this, you talk about looking at the relationship, I do look at the relationship, and I'm sour. And you should be too, because look what we were promised, look what we got. So so that to me is something that that carries a lot of weight in this situation. I had a lot of faith the last time, but but not, almost immediate slap in the face. And now suddenly, these prominent people that that seem to know what they're doing, magically, cut this entire project in half, we're gonna have faith again to move forward with that? I don't, I don't share that same faith that you do, and I'm not swayed by three point two million dollars to convince me that that makes it any better. It doesn't, in my opinion. It's sold, it's selling us short on that, on this project, and and what that property could be. Look around Deerfield Beach, it's a unique piece of property. There's nothing like that again, ever that's stuck with it for eighty years. Eighty years. I think that is something, when you look back to legacy issues stood up here, that's not something I wanna be attached with or limited to.
That's mine. But the other side of that, Mayor, is that in twenty, thirty years, people could have said, you know, what could have been there, there was something handled, there was something there that could have worked, and that commission chose not to do it, and we may not end up with something good. So just because it is a prime piece of property, that is not to say that in the end, we're gonna end up, you know, with the golden goose. Not at all. It's a gamble. That's what, that's what we're, yeah, they're they're out there, but is it gonna happen? It's the, the, you know, if we look at, you know, if someone was to say, listen, there is five hundred million dollars, that's a half a billion dollars. But I'm gonna give you this amount of money right now, and you might get that five hundred million. You don't know that you're gonna get it. It may happen, but you don't know that you're gonna get it.
The one thing I do know, is it's not gonna stay there. And the reason it's stayed vacant is because of this relationship, this list.
And it may not stay vacant, you're right, it must stay vacant, but it doesn't mean that it's gonna work out in our favor as to what that we can see it, it's just how you look at it. That is true.
Mr. Droski?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Listen, clearly, three of my colleagues have a different vision than than I do for for this city, and and that's very regrettable, and and the voters will judge them um based upon that. And the voters that judged this issue back in two thousand, they voted seventy-seven point seven seven percent. I looked it up, seventy-seven point seven seven percent to vote in favor of the lease for the research development park. Uh, twenty-two point two three percent obviously voted against. So rounding up seventy-eight percent, this commission is turning its back on seventy-eight percent of the residents of this city that voted. If you're gonna stare at those residents and you're gonna tell them that you're turning your back on them, then you do that, and you tell the press that and everybody else, but I am not. I think that this is something that we need to go forward um with a much bolder plan, and I'll use that word till. And I'll use that word till the end of time, bold, 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 and I'm not afraid to use it. Because I have a very different vision for this city going forward, and I'm not going to turn my back on seventy-eight percent of the residents that voted for this, that voted for this, that now we're going to politically, um, just make go away uh, because we're having three point two million dangled over our heads, which in the long run is going to be nothing. And yes, I'm getting, you know, passionate and my blood pressure is going up on this. Because I'm a resident, just like the rest of my colleagues here, you know? I, I want nothing but the best for this city. And you have to look at that property and look at that location. What could be there, folks? Is this what you want to see? You saw the renderings, do you want that two-story building there? That you're not going to be able to see from I ninety-five, when this is going to be a much more bustling city in the, in the future? Look at Hillsborough Boulevard, for example, just by way of comparison. That stretch between I ninety-five and Dixie Highway is, is, is changing, um, right before our eyes. I bet you five years from now, you won't recognize that corridor, how much more improved that's going to be. Southwest Tenth Street is going to be the exact same way. We cannot stop progress from coming forward. So why not have the residents say what their progress is? Why not have the residents decide what they want there? Whether it's office, medical, whatever, all that the RFP procedure does is it brings forward the proposals and then the residents get to decide, not us, the politicians. Give the residents the ability to decide. They decided the first time, don't take that decision out of their hands. This is the residents to decide, not us as the politicians. Um, this is not something that we should be deciding, that the residents need to decide. And so I'm going to end on, on that point. I don't need to reiterate everything that I said before. Um, but again, even if your vision is different, let the residents decide what that vision should be, not us.
Commissioner, do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's really not, I, I don't agree with your comments at all, Commissioner Grossky. First of all, for twenty-five years, it's been a vacant piece of property. So why don't you just, you know what, we're running out of land for the cemetery, why don't you just put another cemetery there? I'm sorry, but you know what, that's great that they had the vision twenty years ago to put a great property there. But for twenty-five years, that property has stayed vacant and the city has gotten twenty-five dollars for it in the last twenty-five years. I'm sorry, but it's great to have vision. I, I applaud your passion, but sometimes you have to look at the reality of the situation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll just say that it is, it is, I have more hope for the city of Deerfield Beach. I have more belief in the city of Deerfield Beach, and I think this falls short where we could be. And I've been here for a long time.
That's your question?
Go ahead.
How many residents are here? Raise your hand. How many think the mayor is right? We should leave it to the voters, raise your hands. How many think we should approve this right now?
How many are employed by People's Trust?
Okay, if you're not employed by People's Trust, how many think we should approve it? Come on, Dennis.
Not employed by People's Trust?
And how many disapprove of it that are not employees of People's Trust? Thank you.
Your straw ballot done?
My straw ballot's done, it doesn't help me. I'm caught in the middle here. I am really caught in the middle here. I'm going to say something now, Bill. I've been on this bench for five years now. And I've come to know Todd as being the tightest money pincher for the city for five years. He would rather eat a garbage can than spend a nickel of the city's money. And I know you. You've been for the people all along. And as much as I like this project, I'm going to change my vote and go with you. Because you and Todd meant to let the people decide. Let's put it to a referendum, let you decide what you think should be done with that property. Should we sell it? Or should we hang on to it, try to make a research lab out of it? That's probably the question on, on the ballot. Permission to sell the property.
Open it up for public comment.
It was already open for public comment. Remember, I would sit there and ask you guys to come forward, if you guys didn't want to? I opened it up for public comment.
You will?
Well, you're not the public, as I believe you're part of this, sir.
You're the TS part.
Yes, you can come right up, sir.
Thank you. It's an expression. Being caught between the rock and a hard place. The rock being.
I'm sorry.
In the rock, correct me.
I need your name and address for the record.
Oh, Troy Schaefer, Port United, Sapporo, Shippensburg.
And you are the owner of?
Yes, People's Trust.
And that's why we're letting you be part of this.
And I appreciate it. And I think a good part of this meeting is your fault, man. When you took my phone call, which is very nice of you, gave your honest opinion, and we spoke about twenty minutes. And I have to respect that, your opinion for whatever reason. And I have my own opinion because I want to do one thing. Get rid, get rid of the boy on that corner. And that's what I want to do. And create two hundred jobs for the city minimum. Because RFP alone has about a hundred and fifty jobs as headquarters. And I also want to give, I want to name the project Innovation Park of Deerfield Beach. That's going to be lit up. Why am I saying Innovation Park of Deerfield Beach? Because there'll be spaces for two thousand square feet, about six or seven of them. And the people come in there, are new entrepreneurs, having an idea of what they want to do. As you probably know, I own a small nail polish company, OPI. What does that have to do with this? I started as six hundred square feet. And I sold the company for almost a billion dollars thirty-three years later. I didn't know it was going to be in nail polish. And that's the way innovation is all about. You go from dental supplies with acrylic nails to nail polish. It's an opportunity. I'm a refugee here, I'm Hungarian, I was born here when I was ten years old, without a penny. And this is a land of opportunity, not a speculation. Because with all due respect, what could be, would be, should be, doesn't work in my book. A fact of me, and I don't care about contracts. When I tell you I'm going to give you three point two million dollars, that's my word, and you can check it against anybody else. I didn't force these people to come here. And one requirement, if you're not in Deerfield Beach, don't come here. But it's completely voluntary, believe it or not, I would, I would pledge on that. I didn't force anybody to come here. I think you and the Commissioner Grossky are making a tragic mistake. What's, I've been here, driving here for seven years. I took a gamble on this city by building a thirty million dollar garage I could build a hundred and fifty-two thousand square foot building next to me. I've been fighting it, I've been trying to do everything in my power to get it done. And I haven't gotten anywhere. And by the way, when we talk about this building to be off of ninety-five, you can't see any kind of signage off of ninety-five in this building. I don't think we're going to have the right to build another sign like that. We placed a cross when it said, ace now. I, I ate their once, it was interesting. So I, I, I think honestly, when you say roll the dice, I have a show in Las Vegas every year. And I don't roll the dice, I go there committed and I, and I, I don't gamble. It's not part of my, uh, my, my, my being. And yet, at the same time, I own an insurance company, the biggest gamble of my life. Which is kind of crazy, but it's a gamble that I'm employing three hundred plus people. And I think I'd take care of them pretty well if you'd ask them. And when I do do a value, but I, I have one really hope, I want to give you jobs. There'll be at least two hundred jobs, if we can, one fifty from RFP, at least another hundred jobs would be there. If I get the approval, I'm going to try to get a, a first aid kind of thing on one corner, which I think Dennis spoke about. So I don't know what I'm doing wrong here. And I, I spoke to a couple of the, uh, people on the board. But I think you are making a mistake. Look what you have done. And I don't go back twenty years. And when I stay between the rock and a hard place, that property has been empty.
Yes.
And the problem that I'm in, I'm between Florida and you. And I'm screwed. I think that's legal, I don't want to say that. Because of this. Why are you punishing me and the people of Deerfield and that man's district? Because you have an in for Florida, does that make sense? I would say I'm really not happy about what I'm hearing today. And if you want to keep me away, by all means, you have to go.
Thank you. This isn't personal about Florida, there's, I don't know who Florida is individually, but I can tell you right now, the, the, I know who Andrew Duffel is and who he works for, but he's not part of it. He's been handcuffed as well as anybody else on this project. But much like the conversation you and I had, I don't feel you, I, I did feel like I was so linked the last time after working through the approval. I think you're an honorable man, that's not the issue, this isn't personal at all. This is about what I feel is in the best interest of the city of Deerfield Beach. And I live here. And I've been here a long time, not just in office a long time, but I've been here in the city for a very long time. So in my opinion, you heard it. And I appreciate you sharing your, your opinion on it as well. Is there anyone else, Mr. Mealy, that you'd like to come up and have speak from your group?
You want some residents?
No, this is, we're very close to the public, they had the opportunity, this is for anybody who's attached to your team.
I don't think we have anybody else to speak to.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Preston.
You know, I've set up here for many years. And, uh, I've gone through some very difficult and challenging debates. And if there is a project in any one, uh, commissioner's district, you know, I always want to hear from that person on that perspective as to why we think it's good and to speak to them, and I've seen that come from this day and night courtesy, not, not any of my colleagues. Ask me, this is in your district, tell me why you like it. Tell me what's good, how does it benefit the city? Is it, should be just a district thing? Absolutely not, it should be what is good for the city. But what I have seen over the years is that a, an understanding where that district commissioner, you know, gets a chance, you know, to tell his side from the perspective of how it is good for his community. I can tell you, and I'm going to say it again, when People's Trust came in, right from the very start, they helped in our community with some projects. Projects that was essential, I will tell you, right across, if you remember, right across, uh, People's Trust is Deerfield Beach High School. In so many ways, that was just a simple, right? I actually came to the city and said, we need to clean this area up. It's the only public high school in the city of Deerfield Beach, and it looks filthy, no attention given to. I created and wanted a project for that area, and People's Trust stepped right in with the idea also to create some programs. They have kids come from, uh, Deerfield Beach High School, because everybody's not cut out for college, but to try to, you know, craft a way that we could give kids jobs coming out of high school, provide, uh, some employment for them. But, but again, you know, nobody tonight has said, this is Commissioner Preston, the Vice Mayor Preston, district, talk to us. Talk to this commission. So in, in essence, you're going to do what you want to do anyway. But I will tell you to me, and I'm not going to change my mind, it's a good project for the city of Deerfield Beach and it's a good project for this people.
I believe I started with all of our comments. I did want to hear that.
Yeah.
And, and you're, you're certainly on a situation where it's a district issue in particular. It carries a lot of weight, this is unique. And when the referendum went out, it wasn't just district two, it was city one.
But I said that.
So that's why it's a little different, I understand what you're saying, certainly respect your.
I have seen other people here with that, with, because you're a district, what do you think about? So I've seen that done, I'm just saying that it wasn't done with me tonight, that's all I'm saying.
I thought that's what I did when I opened it.
Well, you did, you did, but you did, but you did ask it as, I'm just saying.
Okay.
That, 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 that did not happen.
Certainly was not my intent to.
Yeah, I know that, I don't think it was.
Commissioner, do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, um, this is why I enjoy being on this dais with all of you. Uh, none of this is personal. We all have a, a, a vision and a vested interest in this city. Uh, we're all residents here, we've all been here for a long time. Uh, and I value each of your opinions. Um, whether I agree with them or not, i- i- is beside the fact. The, the one thing that we do have to look at, um, and I know that we are looking at it, is, you know, who is the, the entity that is proposing this development? Is it a known entity and a trusted entity? If this was JM Family Enterprises, would we be having the same conversation? I don't know, I'm not asking anybody to, to, to ans- answer that question either. Uh, but this is a valued member of our community who has proven himself. Uh, he's also stated that within five days after the approval, he'll be putting a million dollars into the city's pockets. And then up to, again, three point two million when it's all said and done. And if he does not comply, he is in default, the city keeps the money and we can move on with the property as if it was ours all along. Uh, so I'm not sure why the apprehension, this is a, a possible win-win solution and a situation for the city. Uh, I understand, you know, the, the mayor's concern, heck, for twenty-five, twenty years, uh, this property has laid vacant. And for eighteen of those years, FAU or Florida has not done anything to promote that property. I understand all of that. And I'd be salty as well. But at the same time, I think we have to look at what's best for that area and this city. And it's my vision and, and my opinion that this is the best opportunity for this property. Because we do not know what's going to happen in three years or four years or ten years. And again, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. And, and that is the reason why I'm still in full support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, do that. The other comments, give everyone enough time to speak on this as much as they want.
I'm really told them.
It's, it's, it's very tough.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I just want to say something very quick. I know when we were here last year, it was the Seventh Amendment. And I remember you all talking about, I'm disappointed you heard about how long it's taken. But keep in mind, for the first six amendments, we weren't here, it was somebody else totally different. We just came here last year. So I know this is our second time here, but please remember, the first six times had nothing to do with us. It was a company that's long gone. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, that this extension, uh, be granted.
Is that a motion to approve the ordinance?
Yes, it is a motion to approve the ordinance.
Commissioner Grossky, you ready?
I was going to make an opposite motion, so we have to go through this one.
No, I believe, is that a second for you, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. We'll call, or?
Commissioner Droski?
No.
Commissioner Hurdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Partas?
No.
Vice President Preston?
Yes.
And Mayor Deans?
Yeah.
Here now, comments by administration and legal. No further, no further comments. Turn it over to City Manager.
I'm sorry, we're still in the middle of the meeting. No, we're in the middle of the meeting. Ma'am, you have to move.
I understand, I just want you to know, I'm not here in two thousand nine.
Ma'am, we are here. We're in the middle of the meeting. We're gonna ask you to remove. We can have her removed, please, so we can conduct our meeting. This is people we wanna get, this is our folks. But can we continue on? We, we, we still have an agenda here, please. No, no, we moved on. Can you do the comments and stuff and talk about it?
Yeah.
Were it comments by administrations, is that correct?
Correct.
I have no comments this evening, Mayor. I can, unless I can turn over Pioneer Days to any one of, uh, on the commission who wants to speak about that event that's happening, but I, I would like that to be brought up. I can refer it from Stine and Thunder on that.
Thank you. Legal?
No comments there for tonight. We're now on comments by Mayor and City.
If you'd like to say what you're gonna say as far as what swayed you or else you like to say.
What swayed me the most was the fact that you left it to the voters. I'm a firm believer that when it comes to major decisions such as this, especially what's happened over the last year since I've been on the grid, one delay after another delay after another default after another delay. Although I believe this serious now, I am a firm believer, lead it to the voters, make the point, let the voters decide. There are issues that I have that I want the same thing, that I think are important enough to let the voters decide. Your vote counts, and I don't wanna see anybody take that away from you. That, that's what swayed. Ben, I will do everything in my power to get something built there to help your district. You know how I feel about you and your district. But some things just don't sit right.
Totally, yeah.
That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. We started with District Three.
Oh, I didn't know I was speaking for my district.
Yes, you are.
Okay, wait, can I?
Once we voted, that item was over, that's why we do that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any other comments?
Yes, I do. I have an item coming up in the next meeting, gentlemen, in which I'm asking you to send something to the voters to change in our charter. We can be bold and say, all right, we could vote no, and the item's dead. But I think it's important enough when it comes to the city charter, present it to the voters and let them decide. I want you to think about that between now and the next meeting, because that's all I'm asking, that the proposal, the ordinance that I've worked out with legal is a change in the charter with term limits, and I want the voters to make the decision what they think. They think we're doing a great job and maybe wanna extend this one more term? Fine. They think we're doing a rotten job, throw us out. There's no guarantee even if it happens. Let's assume the voters for a minute, say you can have a third term. Bill, you beat an incumbent. I beat an incumbent. Ben, you beat an incumbent. No guarantee that if you run for one term, two terms, three terms, you're gonna win. That's one. Two, nobody's forcing somebody to run for a third term. But if the public wants it and the commission is together, somebody does wanna run for a third term, let the voters decide that, whether it's a good idea or not. Because whether we have two terms or three terms, those that don't do a good job don't get to come back, period. No matter how many terms we have. Second, we're in the minority. Many like Pembroke Pines, Pompano, Coconut Green, no limits. Tudy has been mayor for a long time. She's been on the board for twenty years. Pembroke Pines, my friend who sits on the planning council, Mr. Castillo, has been there forever. I think he was born on the commission there. So they need to get up to the voters, to me, is important. They say no, okay, they say no. But if they say yes, I mean, let's face it, Bill, I'll pay you and Todd a compliment. Your, your voters hated you so much, you're in on the post. They obviously, they felt you did a good job, taught you to, that nobody would even try to run against you. But if we don't change the charter, in three years, sixty percent of this commission, gone. By law, finished. Rookies have to deal with a two hundred and twenty million dollar budget. I think the voters need to decide this issue. And that's what I'm asking the commission to do on, at the next meeting and the second reading. Let the voters decide. That's what you convinced me with tonight, your argument. You said, let the voters decide. How could I say no to you when I'm asking on an issue I think is important to let the voters decide? That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. You jump around, let's go to District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Partas. I will do the research. I have not seen the text of your proposed ordinance. Uh, I have seen the backup to it, though. I have read it, so I will be sure to do the research, and I'll be prepared for the next meeting. The only thing that I would like to add is that March fifth is my next Saturday office hours. You can either sign up directly with me or through the city manager's office. And that's all I have tonight. I think the other topics will be covered by my colleagues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go to District One.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, resident brought up the fact that she is under the opinion that an entire condo was purchased to be an Airbnb. So I really hope that the city manager and the city attorney researched that to find out the validity, the validity of that rumor. That would be very, very concerning. Don't know if we, as a city, can do anything about that, but it just shows you where this is headed. As we know, Pioneer Days coming up this weekend, as well as the Festival of Arts. So we've got a full, full celebration happening. We've got a parade on Saturday starting at ten o'clock, uh, and then it goes all the way over to Sunday. I believe at the, uh, the end of Saturday, we're gonna even have fireworks over at the beach. So looking forward to seeing everybody there and looking forward to have a great time. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, at Bethlehem Church, I actually started today. The Florida East Coast Baptist Association is holding the one hundred and nineteen annual session at Bethlehem, I say, right here at Deerfield Beach. And the pastor that's moderating here is Pastor Toby Gilchrist. And he's going to be speaking tomorrow at seven PM. All of, uh, all of the, my colleagues are welcome to that, invited to that, in fact. So please come out. The next thing is that unfortunately, I'm gonna be losing Mr. Marlowe. This Marlowe's gonna be reassigned to the Arthur Ash Building. He just did a tremendous job here in the city of Deerfield Beach. Uh, I'm gonna ask the city manager if we could get Mr. Marlowe, you know, give him something for this appreciation, you know, appreciation for the great job that he's done in the city of Deerfield Beach with kids and for our great city, just the all the way. Uh, we have a Super Bowl champion with someone I like to bring him for the commission. Brandon Powell is a city of Deerfield Beach person. He played, yes, for the Packer Rattler, uh, gay Packer Rattlers. He played for the Packer Rattlers, Deerfield Beach High School, went to the University of Florida, played for the Dolphins for a while, went to, uh, went to Los Angeles Round, and today, city of Deerfield Beach as a Super Bowl champion. Now, I will take great pleasure when he's in town, uh, you know, to introduce him to this mission.
It's two years in a row.
Black Heritage Banquet is going to be on the twenty-sixth of this month over at the DoubleTree. If you are looking to participate in that, I heard the tickets are running out. And, uh, so if you're looking to go to that, you better call. And I don't know that they have them by now, but I would call immediately if you have any interest in attending. And that's it for me, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Like, obviously, we get in these big debates, and if you, as you can see, what happens at the end of the week, people show their colors at the end when they don't get what they want. And I hope it's a lesson for all of us. You saw that here tonight. You know, I know it's high stakes, and, and I understand that. I certainly respect the opinion of everybody up here. We've all been swayed by each other's arguments up here, the thoughts. I think I was against the original expansion of the senior center. You guys convinced me that was the right thing to do. The residents convinced me. So that, that's what happens, and it, you know, it's not, none of this has been personal. It's about, but I think it's the best thing to inform, and I think that's what we all make our opinions on, is believe me, if it was personal, you would see a lot of things happening that, you know, personalities would come out. But we don't do that, because we make our decisions based on what we think is in the best interest of the people we reference. I, I, and all of us do that. We have a lot of big events coming up. Uh, there's too many really to mention. This was an exhausting argument, so I, I will leave it at that. Um, I will say, and I mentioned briefly, um, the tragedy at Stoneman Douglas, the intro of this. Yesterday, one of the things that people may or may not remember, and I hope they do remember, is that we lost one of our residents during that with, um, Mr. Beagle, who was, uh, killed in, in the Stoneman Douglas shooting. And I hope that with all the things that are going on out there, with all the rhetoric and with all the people that seem to, uh, so easily to get angry, that we all just realize that we should be kind and that people, that people need help when it comes to mental illness, and let's hope that they get it. And we hope that we support organizations to do that. Losing Dr. Marlowe from the Deerfield Beach High School as the principal is a big blow to the city of Deerfield Beach, because he's been an outstanding leader over there. And we're, we're glad, we were lucky to have had. And it's a shame that he's leaving to move on to greener pastures, but it's well deserved for him. So, uh, I believe that is all I have. I know I'm probably missing something. Other is one thing. I've heard from the city manager and from others that our city employees are getting a lot of grief in areas in which they interact directly with the public. The city pier is one. We have rules that are put in place, whether it be masked or whatever it may be, or showing I D, whether you're a resident or not, to get onto the pier. The feedback that I've heard is that we have people calling up racial tirants towards our employees at the pier. Now, that can't be tolerated at all. So in my opinion, while we can't pass a rule that limits free speech, what people wanna say, I think we should make these people famous. I think we should put a camera with a recording at that pier. So when someone decides they wanna use a racial slur to address one of our city employees because they're not happy with something, I'll be happy to put their face in that video on my Facebook page and pump it out to anybody I can to let them know that that kind of behavior, you're gonna be held accountable in some way, shape, or form. I've talked to the city manager about that being a possibility. I haven't talked to the city attorney, if that comes into issues, I can see by this hair sticking up on his back and his neck, that might be an issue. But I feel very strongly about it, because it shouldn't be tolerated. Our employees know it deserves to have that done. And people who are like that, I, I'd love to expose them to the public. They might not care, but you know what? I, I think, I think they need to be held accountable in some way, shape, or form. Let their employers decide whether or not that's the kind of people they want. Working for them. With that, I think that's all the comments I have for tonight. Is there anything I'm missing, Mr. City?
If I could just, on Pioneer Days, we are looking forward to the parade on Saturday morning at ten AM. There will be vendors, arts, crafts, activities all throughout the day on, throughout the day on Saturday and Sunday. We have our fireworks Saturday night at nine PM. And we have our first ever bonfire on the beach to conclude our Pioneer Days on Sunday evening, starting from six PM to nine PM.
I wanna thank staff for taking that idea and writing it down.
Bill?
Yes.
I'm gonna apologize for not attending, but if you don't, just getting COVID.
I did not know you had it. I'm glad you're better.
Yes.
No problem.
I, I have inherited two weeks in my house, which was difficult. But I went to two different labs and tested negative in each of the two labs. Rather than just trust one, I went to two, two, two separate labs a week apart, just to be sure that I was clear.
Glad you were better.
I survived.
City Manager?
And I had a suspicion that Commissioner Preston would speak about the Black Heritage Banquet. I also wanna include that, although I think we are in capacity, we might have the ability to go up another table or two there, Commissioner, so we might be adding some capacity to that, uh, that event. I also include a tribute to Martin Luther, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I understand that some of the entertainment that we have planned for that evening, online giveaways, is gonna be quite amazing. So I'm really looking forward to that as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I know there's a lot of events we're missing. If anybody's still listening at this hour, go to our website, check out all the great events. I think we're all tired from tonight. So thank you so much. Thank you all in favor, say hi.
Hi.